Welcome everyone to the October 17th Nesho Regional School Committee meeting. This meeting is a workshop dedicated to meeting with folks regarding our OPEB situation. And I am going to turn it over to Superintendent Clancy.
And I'm going to turn it over to Pat Maroney in a minute. Thank you. So this is just as we're taking a look at potential steps forward from here. I think that we took a great step this year in terms of our budgeting process and making it a line item. The question is now what do we do with that line item from here as we continue to move forward? You know, I think that we want to continue to show good faith, good due diligence, but there, this is really a complex world and not something that necessarily a school district wants to take on. And so Pat and her role has gone out and taken a look and brings forward two companies tonight, two organizations for us to take a really good look at. This is really only for the purpose of information gathering only tonight. That's all this is. This is our first step of the dipping the toe into the water of OPEB at that next level. So we're not looking for decision-making. We're not looking to say, "My gosh, this is what we absolutely have to do." We're saying, "Here are two alternatives that we can consider when we take a look at that whole scope." So I know that they've sent two briefings to you to take a quick look at. I believe Pat sent those out earlier to you. So with that, Pat, I'm going to ask if you can possibly tee up our first group.
Can I ask you to do one quick thing for people that don't know what OPEB means and the acronyms and give an overview of it?
Other Post-Employment Benefits. And it's basically retirees.
So it's our future liability for retirement funding for anyone who's been in the district and is currently retired and anyone who currently works for the district and will be retiring. It looks out into the future as to what our liability is. And the reason I wanted to just bring this up is I don't know that people understand what it is. I wouldn't proclaim for me to understand what it is, but that currently what we do in the district through our budget is we pay retiree medical as it comes up each year. So we're funding each year for that current year. And with the number of people that are going to be retiring, which is going to grow, it's going to be significantly larger, we need to have a plan in place in order for us to meet that future obligation. And the formula for that future obligation changes from year to year, which means our projected liability changes from year to year. But this is not something that is unique to Nesho Regional School District. It's all public institutions, including municipalities.
Right. And this liability appears on our balance sheet when we have an audit. And so it's important that we establish some funding for this liability. And today, first I want to say thank you to Vicky Chavie for coordinating everything today. And I'd like to introduce Kate Canny, and she's from PARZ. And she's with a company that provides municipal retirement investment services. So the funds that we would appropriate every year to this fund would be invested by her company. And I think she's going to...
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'll print it out for the presentation so you don't have to get your computers. And this is just sort of a guideline for our conversation. I don't want to sit here and kind of give a lecture. So if you have a question as I'm talking, please let me know. Happy to answer. And if something, you know, if you want me to give you background on anything as well, I'd be happy to speak to that. So, you know what? So I'm Kate Canny, and I work for PARZ, Public Agency Retirement Services. Kind of sums up what we do. We work only with public agencies. And we help them, we don't provide the retirement benefit. We help them fund and plan for funding to support the benefit. So we're helping you keep the promises that you made. And just for a little background, you know, I serve on my finance committee in towns where I live, and I've had to explain to people Massachusetts is kind of a unique state. There are only a few states in the United States that retiree healthcare benefits, providing that mandate is a legal mandate. If we were to go to New Hampshire, depending on your town size and different things, you can actually change that. You can grandfather people, you can eliminate the benefit, Vermont, things like that. But here in Massachusetts, unfortunately, this is something we face. Now we can't get away with it, get away from it. So I work for Public Agency Retirement Services. We are based in California. A quick history on us, we were founded in 1984, started off with producing alternative to Social Security programs, early retirement incentive programs, and started in 1988, 98 with the first OPEB trust program for a school district out there, very forward-thinking. In 2004, we developed the first multiple employer trust program. That's what we deliver, and I'm going to talk to you about that tonight. And we have over $1.5 billion of OPEB assets under management nationally. We arrived here in Massachusetts in 2014. In that timeframe, we've grown our client base here in Massachusetts to 35. We work with 18 regional school districts in Massachusetts. We were selected to provide OPEB trust fund programs by the state of Rhode Island for all their municipalities and regional school districts. So we offer a coordinated program down there. So we offer a multiple employer trust. And that is a program that we've developed, a trust program that individual agencies can join and they benefit from. And it's pre-established as opposed to a single employer trust where you go out and start that yourself. So that's what I'm kind of speaking to. So about PARZ, on slide two, I touched on this earlier. We have been in the business for 30 years and provide multiple employer trusts plus also other retirement programs. Why you should, the slide that's on slide four, why you should pre-fund with PARZ. I actually think this should just be titled, "Why you should pre-fund," in general, whoever you choose, why you should pre-fund your obligations. Right now, from what I understand, you are setting aside, you've set aside some assets of about $150,000, but it's not in a trust, it's sort of in a stabilization. So you're technically what's called a pay-as-you-go situation. So you're meeting that retiree healthcare obligation every year. When you think about the finances, your retiree healthcare costs are growing at a rate that's higher than the inflation and your tax basis. So that's kind of arcing up like this, where your tax basis is going this. We also have people retire in bubbles. So your retiree population increases and increases. And then also your retirees are living longer. So that number is increasing exponentially. So to pre-fund, the plan is that when you're pre-funding and you're developing assets and investment program with a well-diversified targeted plan, you'll be able to offset those additional costs with your investment earnings. And that's a key factor. So investing your assets can help lower the liabilities. As you stated earlier, your liabilities are showing up on your financial statements. Assets can also offset that liability. So when you look at your, when your auditors and your actuaries are looking at your statements, your invested assets will help offset that. Prior to this past year, your assets, your liabilities have been listed as a footnote under GASV 45. They were a footnote. GASV 75 has taken effect. Those are now going to be a line item. I kind of think as GASV 45 is a little bit of a carrot, saying, "Hey, guys, think about this, start thinking about it, funding." People didn't make a lot of progress on this, and GASV 75 is kind of coming as a stick, like, "Okay, we wanted you to pre-fund, you didn't, so now it's going on." So it's going to have a big impact that way when you see that. Credit rating agencies, when you have an established program and you're pre-funding, that improves your discount rate. Your discount rate, the higher your discount rate, the lower the cost of borrowing money is. So if you were to go out to bond a construction project or something like that down the road with your pay-as-you-go, it's going to cost more to bond than it would be because it's showing that you're planning for assets for these liabilities. And we also find that it can be helped also as a budget stabilization tool. So on page five, this is, we looked at, we requested your 2015 actuarial report. And you're going to notice, I want you to do one thing, you're going to see annual required contribution, that number. I want you to, from now on, disregard that. That went away in GASV 75. And I'm really grateful because I think that number terrified people because it was called an annual required contribution. No one made that annual required contribution. It was, it was a budget breaker. So you don't have to think about that number anymore. The numbers you want to look at is really this unfunded actuarial liability. So in 2015, you showed a liability of $38 million. And that's your, and your discount rate is based on pay-as-you-go, it's 4.5. If you were to be pre-funding, and your actuary did a great job by calculating that for you, you would be given a 7% discount rate. General rule of thumb, with every percentage point, your discount rate increases, your liability could go down 10% to 12% on paper. So as your discount rate goes up, your liability goes down. So you'll see here, under pre-funding, you go from $38 million to $24 million. That's a key thing. It's regardless of what OPEB trust fund provider you work with. So this is just OPEB 101, free to know. If you have a GASV compliant trust that's properly diversified and with proper trust documents, you'd be given a higher discount rate and your liability would go down. So, quick thing, GASV compliant trust. Three key things you need for a GASV compliant trust. Your funds must be dedicated to retiree healthcare. Two, they must be protected from creditors. And three, they must be an irrevocable trust. And that's very off-putting. And I know most people go, "Oh, wait a minute, irrevocable." It's important to think of those funds as irrevocable for anything but retiree healthcare. So you can go into your trust at any time and pay for your retiree healthcare. So if you have a year where you have assets in your trust, you're having issues budgeting and balancing the budget, you have assessments or something to do, you can actually go into your trust, if it's written properly, and take out that year's retiree healthcare. But you can't take money out for a boiler or roofing project. So these are really important numbers. Some bad news about this page. With GASV 75, they're going to be reducing, they're going to be tightening up the discount rates. So with pay-as-you-go, we're finding, some of our clients are finding their pay-as-you-go discount rate is being listed at 3, 3.5. Some is low as 2, 2.75. Unfortunately, that rule of thumb, it was great. With every point, percentage point, your discount rate goes up, your liability goes down 12, 10 to 12%. With each percentage point, your discount rate decreases, your liability on paper goes up. So really, that's, that's why it's very important now with GASV 75 to have a GASV compliant trust put in place. And any good provider of GASV, OPEB programs would be providing that for you. So the PARZ OPEB Trust Team. So I'm with PARZ, and we are the administrator. We run the program for you. We provide record-keeping, sub-trust accounting, because it's a multiple employer trust, all the accounts are held together. We work with actuarial coordination. Falls are very busy for me. We're working with auditors and actuaries to give them all the information. We take that burden off of your staff. They don't have to do that. They just send us the requests and we work out the documentation. We monitor full plan compliance and regulations. Massachusetts just changed its regulations and laws last year. They went into effect last November, so we've been working with our clients to make sure everything's up to date. And we're very happy to say our program fully meets the new standards.
Who's the fiduciary?
The fiduciary is, there's a twofold. The fiduciary would be the plan administrator, who in, under our program is your district treasurer. And then also our trustee and custodian, which is US Bank, they also serve. So they're co-fiduciaries.
Thank you.
So US Bank serves as the trustee and custodian of the funds. They hold the funds in a custodial account, and they serve as trustee, which means they're serving as the fiduciary. And that means they conduct themselves under the best interests for your retirees, the beneficiaries of the trust. They safeguard the assets, plan fiduciary, custodian. Now, under our programs, we have two choices. US Bank can serve as the investment manager under a discretionary, which is more of a developed portfolio. Or we have Vanguard. We've developed a program with Vanguard, which is a directed program. So that's a choice you would make if you adopted our trust. So here are a listing of some of our New England clients. And I apologize, Gateway Regional School District and Blackstone Valley Vocational Technicals were not listed on this. But starting with South Worcester Regional Technical School down to Whitman Hansen are our regional school district clients. So I've been talking very quickly probably, and just want to see if there are any questions so far? Yep, okay. Great. All right. So we pride ourselves on having a very full-service, comprehensive program. Our mission is to take the burden off of your administration. You have a school, a business manager, HR superintendent, district treasurer, and a lot that's going on. Our program is designed so that the treasurer hands over the day-to-day administrative role to PARZ, and we manage that. And we report to the district treasurer, who reports to you. So that's where we're trying to offload all the administrative aspect. So if you look on slide eight, it shows you all the services we provide. Standard OPEB trust services will provide you trustee, investment management, and custodian services. We provide the additional. We provide the investment fiduciary through US Bank, actuarial coordination that I touched on briefly, funding and contribution processing, we manage that all for you, distribution processing. Our trust fund is set up so that you can take out assets at a time that you choose if you're paying one year. We actually have clients that have fully funded and are now in the process of taking disbursements for their programs. Ongoing compliance monitoring, document preparation, not only for monthly and quarterly statements, but we do a full annual review. And then consulting on development of policy statements for funding plans.
So just a quick one on the distribution processing. Do you handle the distribution to the retirees?
We do. So we have three different models that we operate under. We have the model where we can reimburse the district. We have the model where we reimburse the healthcare provider, so it's blue cross blue shield, or the individual retirees. And that's all covered under the fees. That's not an additional cost, it's based on this. So in California, we've been doing this since 1998. We have different models going on. So we have a team of 50 in California that they just manage that. So we do that for you. So key program advantages of PARZ. We have a turnkey, comprehensive program. The trust is in place, it's established, ready to go. Because it's a multiple employer trust, the program has developed, been developed, and the investment model has been put in place so that it's a cost sharing. We're pulling, our Vanguard pool is designed for an asset management pool of $250 million. We have people that, agencies that have joined with as little as $15,000 and as much as $12 million, and they're all benefiting from that cost model. So those are key factors. Fast implementation. We have no starter fees. Our fees are based strictly under assets under management. We have had districts that have joined and established their trusts in the fall, and they're not funding until the next fiscal year. There are no costs. There are no costs incurred until assets are under management. And we pride ourselves on local control. You're in control. We report to you, you're deciding which investment program you want to participate in and how you'd like the funds to be. And then also the design of our model, because it's a multiple employer trust and assets are being pulled, we have benchmarks that the fees decrease as assets grow, but that fee structure is based on all of the client assets going into the different programs. So under our Vanguard program, we have different pools, and when they hit $50 million mark, the assets fee basis goes down for everybody. So we have clients that are achieving that. So the client who goes in at a smaller level is making those benchmarks even though they haven't hit the $50 million mark. So we have two different investment directions. One is a directed approach that we have with Vanguard. And those are four pools that you can select from, fixed income, conservative, balanced, or growth. And those are designed basically for you to choose based on your investment tolerance, your risk tolerance. And the fee structure for that is it's 37 basis points all in. So it's 25 basis points or 25% of 1% for assets for PARZ. US Bank has a five basis point for custodial fees. And then Vanguard is a seven basis point fee. Just like to point out that in two of our pools, that the clients, because it's already achieved 50 million, the clients are actually seeing a four basis point fee structure.
Can you explain to everybody what a basis point is?
A basis point is, one basis point is 1% of 1%. So if you're doing the math, it would be 0.0001% of a fee. So hypothetical cost on the Vanguard model, and this is based on a $500,000 investment. We're not anticipating any earnings or future contributions just to make this model for you. The PARZ monthly fee would be $104. US Bank would be $20. And Vanguard would be $29.75. So for a full monthly cost of $157.18, which translates into an annual cost of $1,186 full services. The second option is Option B, which is US Bank. And that's a discretionary approach. They have multiple pools, and you actually work with a portfolio manager to design that program. And it's a little more detailed. That costs has a higher fee based with it, and that goes in at 60 basis points. See on slide 18. And then the hypothetical based on the same $500,000, that would show a monthly cost of $250, $50 with a $3,000 cost. So implementation process, very simple. So the first step is actually what I have during tonight, introduction to the plan, provide you with an overview. Then we will provide you with a full set of sample documents to review for your legal counsel. Governing board adopts their program. We provide the vote language. And then signature-ready documents will be sent, executed by your treasurer, and then the account set up. So that's strictly the implementation. So our sample documents, our trust documents, that is, those documents have been vetted by both Murphy, Essie, Tuni, and Lahane, and Cobble, and Page. Those are the two law firms we've worked with. We had a full review in 2004 when we began to market in Massachusetts. And then last year, with the changes and updating of OPEB regulations here in Massachusetts, we're quite proud we didn't have to make any changes to our documents. It was an interesting thing, the Massachusetts MGL Chapter 32B, Section 20, prior to the adjustment of legislation, was very brief. And it caused a lot of discord and people being, "What does this mean? Who is empowered to have a trust? What does the trust have to look like?" And a lot of agencies were not really setting up trusts to be GASV compliant. The law was rewritten, and now it's very thorough. And now it basically states how you have to have a GASV compliant trust, you have to have trustees, you have to have a custodian, and that's all that, which we're thrilled to see. So, any questions? Quickly, but... So key features also, not only do we, fees are based strictly under assets under management, we do not have minimum contribution amounts. There's no minimum amount. There is no set contribution schedule. So we don't hold you to it. Some, we have clients that invest annually, we have clients that take money out of free cash on certain years. Sometimes they plan, but something pops up and they don't. They have to skip funding for a year, and that all continues on. There are no penalties.
Yeah? I have probably too many questions for this evening.
Pick one, so, because Lynn's got one too. So I want to...
So on your, on your Option A, Option B, et cetera, I don't notice any like year-over-year performance on the funds or anything. So I'm just wondering what...
So yeah, actually I have...
The documents that might be... I look at this in my mind, and for the first time when you made this presentation, I'm almost looking at this because there are some similarities in the 529 when we're going through as far as, you know, with the multi-hub funding. Is there any resource that we can go to to see where there would be like a 525?
I can actually send you some performance on our funds. So we have, right now, our year-to-date for our US Bank fund that we're running in Massachusetts has a year-to-date of 16.64% earnings. Our one-year is 16.38. The benchmark for both of us, the benchmark for our one-year was 12.78. So the 16.38, I think, has a lot to do with, we are in a market that is taking off. And so we are, our US Bank team is constantly monitoring that and pulling back in certain ways so that we don't, you know, we'd love to be able to catch all the highs, but you also have to base it so you can weather the lows.
How old is that fund?
That fund is three years old.
So it's a three-year benchmark of...
Yes, three, yes. So then we also have the Vanguard, year-to-date this year, and we have fixed income, conservative, balanced, and growth. And I'm just going to sweep to the growth of the balanced. Our year-to-date is 5.08. The benchmark is 5.1. One-year is 8.5, 8.05, and our benchmark is 8.03. But we can provide, I can email that to Victoria, some reports on those documents.
Neil, you have more questions?
Well, I do, as far as I have this, so the stability of...
But wait a second, can we jump to Lynn?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Lynn, you have a question?
Yeah, I just want, I know that you don't have a minimum to start one.
No.
But does GASV 75 have a minimum or some kind of a...
Okay, so GASV 75 doesn't have a minimum. So, but that would be something your auditor and your actuary would want to talk to. We've spent some time working with a few of the actuaries here. And there are a couple of things that you want to keep in mind. One, it's not just how much you're putting in, it's what you're putting it into. So it needs to be a compliant trust, it can't just be a set aside. Two, there's the initial contribution. But more importantly, it's the intent to fund. So there are agencies who take month, they get some sort of a settlement or something, they have a large amount, they put it into a fund, and then four, five, six, seven years goes, and they know other contributions. That's going to trigger something like, okay, you're, this is a 30-year investment arc. We want to see a continued intent to fund, so a planning to fund. So it's not always the amount, but the intention, the diversification of the portfolio. Are you in a diversified portfolio that's going to achieve investment earnings? Things like that. So it's not just, you need to fund this percentage each year, it's kind of a combination. And those are good questions to talk to your auditor and your actuary about as well.
Okay. Neil, go ahead.
So just on the basic side of things, do you happen to know how many regional school districts? And I'm not putting you on the spot, but just randomly, if you know how many like regionals in Massachusetts might either be wholly funded or what portion you see them funded at?
So, they're wholly funded, highly unlikely. I have two clients that are, but those are collaboratives and they're...
They're small?
They're small, and they're obligation. Their own cost is much lower. So I would say that we're still in the point where we represent 18 districts and our competitors also, but we're, there's still, there's far more that are not doing anything yet than funding. And very few are, I mean, most are in their initial funding.
So like, single digits at this point?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But that, but that's a question that many, and I'm glad you raised it, that's a question that many are going to have, well, if other people aren't funding it, why should we?
I think people weren't funding because it just seems an overwhelming thing to take on. You have this large liability, and it's like pension liabilities 25 years ago, everyone, "Oh, nobody's funding those." But then they started, and they chipped away at it. This is a 30-year investment program that you're working through. So what you, so it's the first step is oftentimes the hardest. I mean, there's also a lot of confusion prior to the legislation being modified. There are some people who felt that regional school districts weren't included. So now it's been specifically spelled out, so yes, you know, we do want you to do this. So I think there's a little bit of confusion. So I think there's a little bit of confusion as to what it meant and the approaches.
I think just even as simple as Chairman Ross' comment right at the beginning, you know, what is OPEB? We know that there are a lot of people that really don't know what that is. I mean, we use that acronym a lot, but there are a lot of people out there that have no idea, including people who are recipients of OPEB, so to speak.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so, you know, I think that there are no questions that are too simple to be putting out on the table right now or comments to be issued at this point.
I, my, it's my opinion that I think with Gatsby 75 going into effect, with the liability being removed from a footnote onto your financial segments, there's going to be a rush to start for it. And I think you're going to see it picking up. In the past year, the pace has been quickening with people understanding and seeing what that numbers are, those numbers are going to be looking like.
Okay. Couple more. Neil?
So right now with PEGO, the, I mean, the morbid aspect of it is PEGO, we rely on the, the lack of longevity of the people.
Oh, oh, I, oh, I know, oh, I look at the charts.
And that's how the numbers balance, right? So as the longevity increases, our obligations increase by that many fold. Now, the question that I've had in this discussion, the OPEB, because we've had a few conversations, it just seems that the outstanding debt is just so great among all of the municipalities and government sources and so forth, the people that have to do this, that it almost seems insurmountable, the sheer number. So in my mind, if anything is going to force a single payer system, it's this, which is never, which is never discussed. Because the unfunded liability is probably in the trillions if we go nationwide or down municipal. So that being said, if we're one of the few people that fund or aggressively fund this and suddenly we're in an irrevocable trust and we find ourselves going to a single payer system, what happens to our money? Does Uncle Sam take that and say, thank you for your participation?
No, actually, first of all, Uncle Sam does not have access to your money. Money is held for your beneficiaries. Key feature of our trust, and we have a client in South Carolina that's actually experiencing this, it's a housing authority that has gone out of existence, but they were, they still have retirees. Once your benefit obligation has been exhausted, any funds that remain in your trust revert back to your general fund. So if you had a million dollars and suddenly the state house declared a single payer system, no higher retiring healthcare benefits required, your OPEB obligation is gone, that reverts back to your general fund.
Assuming they don't erudite the law some way that they're going to.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that the way that your trust is held, your trust isn't held by the state or anybody, your trust is held by U.S. Bank. Once your, once you show that your obligation has been met, the funds would return back to you.
Okay, thank you.
So, and there is discussion. I mean, in 2012, we had a massive OPEB review that split into two sections. One was fix the law so that people understood what they were doing. Another was actually looking at the actual obligation itself. Should we negate people hired after July 1st, 2018? Should we shorten the benefit lifecycle? All those things are being reviewed. And that, you know, that could come up again and again and may then impact, you may find yourself like another state that doesn't, it isn't mandated. So, or, you know, something happens at the federal level.
Thank you.
Questions? Any more questions? Okay, Mark.
Is the trust document available online?
It is not available online, but I will email a full set of documents. We have an administrative services agreement at Master Trust, a set of documents to Victoria for distribution.
Okay. Thank you. Elsa? Thank you, this was really helpful, very informative, truly appreciate it.
So I'm going to email investment return information and sample documents.
To Vicki.
That's great.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Thanks, Vicki. Sure.
Hello.
Hello. Welcome.
Alex Bartholomew.
Hello.
Hi, folks, come on in.
This is Dory and Alex from Breckle.
Nice to meet you, have a seat. Right there is Dory. Yeah, not in the back of the room, we'll get to you.
I have some presentations at.
Great, yes, thank you so much.
We can, I'll take that.
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Hope we didn't have you waiting too long.
Not at all.
No problem.
Well, welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening, really appreciate that. So if you would, just opening up a bit about yourself and the company to start us, start us off, that would be great.
Certainly. Thank you for having us and giving us the opportunity to present to you tonight. I'm Dory Yort and this is my colleague, Alex Bartholomew. We are, Bartholomew &amp; Company is an independent investment advisory firm. We're located in Worcester, Mass. We've been established 23 years ago. We currently have $1.72 billion in assets under management, of which about 1.38% of, 1.38 billion of it is in some type of municipal funding. We do have, oh, we work with over 200 different communities throughout the state of Massachusetts. And we have 127 funded OPEB accounts with different communities, school districts, water districts, sewer districts, coming throughout the state, of which about $160 million in Massachusetts funding is, that we work with in OPEB funds. Okay? I have, in the booklet in Tab 1, that gives a little bit about the history about the, the company. We work as a team. Typically, when you work with an investment advisor, you have a rep. We, we have a fairly large team that you work with. There are four on the sales and service that were out doing presentations, meeting with treasurers, available for taking calls and solving problems. And we have a fairly large investment team internally within the office also that constantly trace. Alex represents the investment team, and I'll have him talk a little bit later about how we establish the accounts and go through that. We, in Tab 7, you asked who we're working with in Tab 7. I have a listing of the clients that we work with. And if you look to the right, there, it tells the types of accounts we have, so you can see the ones that are checked off. These are the only, these are only the accounts that have signed a privacy release that allows us to list that. You also wanted to know what type of school districts that we have, so they are listed in there, but I'll give you an idea. We do Except Collaborative, Acton, Oxborough, Asvet Valley, the Vocational District School, Bridgewater, Rainham, the Education Cooperative, Frontier Regional School District, Mohawk Trail, Narragansett, the Chauva Valley, Silver Lake Regional School District, South Middlesex Regional Vocational School District. We recently signed on Watchusett Regional School District, and we have Whitman Hansen School District. So in addition to those, we, we have two-year member communities, Stowe and Bolton, and we manage their OPEB funds for them. And I believe Lancaster has their money in with the state, their OPEB funds with the state. Other communities around here, Littleton, Maynard, Westford, Quentin, Marlboro, Oxborough, we manage our OPEB funds. Okay? And again, you can certainly go through the list and look at the communities yourself and see who that we work with. Alex, I want to turn this over to him and have him talk a little bit about how we do build these OPEB accounts, talk a little bit, the, I think you asked for a little OPEB 101. And Alex and I are both very familiar with the OPEB. We've been working in OPEB, with OPEB since it, the Gatsby record first came out in 2005.
Thank you. So as Dory mentioned, I'm part of the investment management team of Bartholomew &amp; Company. So I'm sorry to jump around in this presentation here, but if you go to Tab 3, please, this is just some information of some of the laws, of course, 32B, Section 20, on the following pages, but just a high level of talking about investing your OPEB. As many municipal entities are familiar with, assets are invested either as cash and cash equivalents, whether it's general fund type of money, or a legalist, whether it's, you know, maybe a school district has scholarship funds, for example. So OPEB is invested under prudent investor rule, just as pension assets would be. The purpose of that is to achieve a longer-term expected return over time, to achieve fully funding 20, 30 years from now. I'm sure you, you understand, you know, OPEB is basically the same thing as pension, right? We're putting money aside now to offset the budgetary stress that not funding healthcare premiums for retirees would cause down the line. We don't want a budget that's 90% going to basically benefits of both pension and healthcare premiums, you know, sometime in the future. So OPEB is just in its infancy now in terms of putting money aside where pension is much more mature in that, in that process. So some of the important aspects of what we do with municipal entity, school districts is, as an institutional investment manager, we manage each OPEB trust uniquely, individually, often with investment policy statements, which are becoming much more formalized considering the fact that Gatsby 74, Gatsby 75 with actuarial studies is kind of requiring it. So we're seeing a flood of those coming through the door now, as well as eventually OPEB trust agreements, what we can get into. So managing each entity's OPEB trust differently allows you to choose your risk profile separately, allows you to choose your investment process if there are anything unique. Sometimes there's ESG mandates, which, social responsible investing types of processes, which we, you know, we work with either school districts or communities to, to accomplish, which can be important. And there are many different other types of things. Most entities are invested, you know, in appropriate risk profiles. So even though what we show here visually is, you know, kind of the gambit of risk profiles from capital preservation all the way up to being very, very aggressive, most OPEB trusts are somewhere between moderate and aggressive on that scale. And even those that are invested kind of middle of the road in moderate, the traditional understanding of that being 60% equity, 40% fixed income, are even getting some pushback from actuaries and auditors to take even more risk than that because of the long-term nature of the funds and the discount rate that you want in your, in your study. So again, our, you should know that our investment philosophy, whether it's OPEB trust or any money we manage for institutional clients, retail clients, is something that focuses on risk-adjusted returns. What that means is, we obviously want to outperform the markets over time at a given risk profile, but we want to do it with a lower risk profile. So adding true value in active management isn't just outperforming the underlying indices, it's doing it with a lower standard deviation, a lower correlation, lower beta to the markets.
So I'm going to stop you right there, because some in this room understand what you just said and just level set, because many.
Okay.
May not. And.
Yep.
Clearly, you're an investment manager.
Sure.
So when you just, because we want to, we want to grab as much as we can out of what you're saying. You don't have to go back, but just as you go forward.
So, yeah, and this is something, obviously, part of our job is constant education when we're doing reviews with clients and showing them what we're doing and why and how it makes sense. And when we're doing that, we have specific data points to point to. So in this conceptual conversation, in bad markets, losing less than what the market is. And that, you know, mathematically, quantitatively, is imperative for setting you up for long-term success, is outperforming in bad markets. With the expectation, the understanding that you may be giving up some upside capture, right, some upside participation. You know, look at a year like 2017 that we're in right now, since, you know, the election results at the end of 2016, it's been a very, very strong equity market. And, and our, our clients are participating, but not more than 100% participation, or not even, not even 100% participation. But, as we've proven over our history, in bad equity markets, the last one being 2015 for, for negative returns, outperforming on the downside.
Okay.
So that's what risk-adjusted returns are. It's, it's outperforming with a lower risk profile. And usually that's representative and stress-tested in negative markets. So I think that's a good representation of us from the investment management perspective. It's individually managed, it's customized. We work with you collaboratively, we work with you with your actuary, with your auditor if necessary, to create that risk profile, that strategy. We have investment policy templates, which you can find in the, in the next Tab 1.4. And also, in addition to that, which is, is kind of part of the value added of the investment management team, but it's the company in general, under Tab 5, which we're not going to go through, but just know that there's a sample trust agreement there, just as we give you a sample investment policy statement under Tab 4. And what this is, is this is actually under the old 32B, Section 20, MAPS, German laws, that a community that we work with paid for a number of years ago and allowed us to share it with all of our clients as a template. What we plan on doing, when the IGR comes out from the Department of Revenue under the new 32B, Section 20, is trying to work with a lawyer, a law firm, to update that template or create a new template that we can start to provide to clients, because that will be necessary at some point in time. I'm not sure who your, your actuary is now, but Gatsby 75, 74 will require that in order to count your contributions to your study at some point in time. Some actuaries are more stickler for that than others right now. Some are just requiring an investment policy statement.
Can I break for a second? And ask a question. Did you, when did you vote for, to, to adopt Section 20 of 32B? Was that more recent?
We haven't really adopted it.
We haven't.
Oh, you have not adopted?
No trust.
Okay.
We actually tried.
So, okay.
But we didn't.
Okay. So you're going to be forced into adopting the new section of law. You can no longer adopt the old section of the law. So you're going to need, to establish a trust, you'll have to, you'll have to adopt that section of the law. And you're going to need articles to do that. And there are several steps within that process in the new law that they, they want you to set up. First of all, it's going to be, who will be the trustee or trustees? Do you want to have, by default, it's the treasurer, the treasurer is the custodian, stated in the law, but by default, the treasurer is also the trustee. If you, if you don't take a vote on who the trustee is going to be, it's going to be the treasurer. If you want to have a committee, they set up the guidelines on how that committee has to be formed. And it will be formed with an employee by ballot vote of all the other employees, and it will be a retiree by ballot vote of all the other retirees. It will be, it's very, very specific.
This is what we're reading on the IGR.
And, and so what, an IGR is an informational guideline released at the Department of Revenue Rights, tell you how to enact this law. How should you go forward and enact this law? Because what we're finding, and, and not that $100,000 is a small, or $150,000 is a small amount of money, but what we're finding is the communities that are not up in the millions yet and are going through the new section of law, want to keep the treasurer as the trustee, but they want to have a committee still involved, so they have an advisory committee. So they'll have an OPEB advisory committee, but the treasurer will be the trustee, so you don't have to go through that major process of creating these trustees with three-year terms, and there's quite a lot to that. So, and then you also, under the new section of the law, it states that you are going to invest your funds according to Chapter 44, Section 54, which means you can put them in government bonds, you can put it in about 23 equity, individual equity companies, you can't get diversified. So, but by. If you, if you don't take a vote on who the trustee is going to be, it's going to be the treasurer. If you want to have a committee, they set up the guidelines on how that committee has to be formed. And it will be formed with an employee by ballot vote of all the other employees, and it will be a retiree by ballot vote of all the other retirees. It will be, it's very, very specific.
This is what we're reading on the IGR.
And so what, an IGR is an informational guideline release that the Department of Revenue writes, tell you how to enact this law. How should you go forward and enact this law? Because what we're finding, and not that $100,000 is a small, or $150,000 is a small amount of money, but what we're finding is the communities that are not up in the millions yet, and are going through the new section of law, want to keep the treasurer as the trustee, but they want to have a committee still involved, so they have an advisory committee. So they'll have an OPEB advisory committee, but the treasurer will be the trustee, so you don't have to go through that major process of creating these trustees with three-year terms, and there's quite a lot to that. And then you also, under the new section of the law, it states that you are going to invest your funds according to chapter 44, section 54, which means you can put them in government bonds, you can put it in about 23 equity, individual equity companies, you can't get diversified. So, but by vote of this board, the school committee, they can vote to adopt section 203c, but it is, it's a vote that has to be taken, and allow the OPEB trust to be invested by a prudent person. So that would be, you know, when you draft an article to vote on, you want to take into consideration several of the items of the new law that make a lot of sense to put forward before you go down that path.
We're taking little bites of the elephant right now.
Well, we've seen communities that had already had OPEB, that it was all invested, and, oh, yeah, yeah, we adopted that new law. I'm like, well, did you take this vote? Nope. I'm like, okay, so you're out of compliance with the law right now. You need to go back to, and in that case, it would be a town meeting. You need to go back to town meeting and take these votes. That's why I want to kind of give you some of those.
I think we need a moment of silence if we're not out of compliance right now.
You're not.
You're not out of compliance.
I know, a moment of silence.
But, so there are steps that you need to take to get this new law that you will be required to adopt in order to form a trust.
All right. We have a question.
Yeah, so is this, is this an example of some of the guidance that you provide in setting these things up, or is this another resource that we need to go to in order to set this up and get all the mandatory required voting done?
We like to provide a lot of backup support for you. So we, Chuck Patterson and myself are both former treasurers, we attend all the meetings, we stay on top of this, we've been working with the Department of Revenue, we've been working on that. We're, we've been working with a law firm. It is our, it is our great desire to pay for a trust agreement template that we can share with our clients, so that it's a turnkey. You're a town, you've got a town of, you're a school district, you have a school district of, so you get, you drop in that. And we need, but what we need is the Department of Revenue to set, because whenever they enact a law, it, you know, and you jump at it, then they come back, oh, but they got, here's the hoop shaft to jump through to get to this law. So we, and we've been waiting, and that IGR and Kathleen Clary knows that, because we contact her pretty close to monthly since November of 16, when this was enacted.
Wow, so is your visibility on the IGRs actually?
Yeah, the IGR is actually written. We were told in August that it was actually written in rough draft. We were told.
Last week?
Was it last week?
Last Thursday.
All right. It seemed like it was a while ago, but we were told last Thursday that it is done, they're proofing it, and it should be out imminent. So, and again, we have no control over that, but we have been advising our clients that where it's imminent, you may want to wait for that to come out. That will be the step-by-step, that may even be the warrant articles, you know, sometimes they do that. And then, and then with that, we bring that to our attorney's firm and say, okay, this is how we need to proceed with a trust agreement, and get those documents out there. If you had adopted under the old law, you could go ahead and, you know, you could vote to put the money, you could invest it, that was all written in the old law, and you'd be fine going forward, but eventually, you're going to need a trust agreement. So at your stage, you're going to need it pretty much off the bat. So you do need to, like we said, we wait for the guidelines to come through, because they've been very specific on this law and the change of the law. So getting the warrant article, and getting the right pieces of that warrant article, and then getting the right trust agreement in place is probably your first step.
All right, thank you. So we don't want to interrupt you if you.
Okay.
If you'd like to share more.
Tab four is that sample investment policy, tab five is a sample.
Well, before you go beyond that, on tab four in the sample investment policy, when Alex talked about the actuary and people starting to adopt these investment policies, we've been giving templates out for a while, and we help a client decide, how aggressive do you want to be? What is your risk tolerance? And when we get there, then we provide towards the back of this page seven of nine in these, in this thing, this is a sample of a moderate portfolio. We help you set those targets. This is what your actuary looks for when you have a history of getting the money in and invested, to set the discount rate. They've been asking us for copies of these investment policies. The actuary firms have been calling us and saying, okay, you know, XYZ town has got, you know, 5 million, they're putting a million in every year, we need to change the discount rate, we need to see. They don't look at so much at the performance history, because it's got to be forward-looking. We need to see how they're investing in the funds, how aggressive are they, and that's, and they use their own numbers based upon what the markets are doing, and those numbers help set the discount rate. Everyone's discount rate that's not funded or not in a trust is going to be set at what the.
20-year double A muni bond indexes.
Yes, which is around.
3.3%.
See, I.
So it's a little more complicated than this, but effectively, it's, if you're 10% funded, you get 10% credit for your risk profile and forward-looking expectations of returns. The other 90% is based off that muni bond index. So it's, it has to be standardized that way, because the unfunded liability is showing up on the balance sheets now. And they can't allow people to really mess with arbitrarily that discount rate that could make a huge difference on that unfunded liability, that long-term negative on your balance sheet, for, you know, for people like us in our field that are doing credit work on mostly debt instruments of municipal entities, and the creditworthiness of that entity.
The other section of the law that talks about your funding, the only way you can fund this is through your budget process. You can't take surplus money or anything like this. You have to actually put it in the budget process, and it has to be voted by member towns. So that's, that's a requirement for school districts, specifically, we did give you a copy of the law in here, so you can certainly look through that and, you know, if you need legal counsel on it to help you with that. I think the guidelines from the Department of Revenue will clarify a lot of pieces of that. So, and then on, and in section five, where we give a sample trust agreement, this was under the old section of the law, where you could have a trust committee, and it could be more internal than external. So this will all be amended once the new guidelines are out. On section six, as far as reporting goes, we give you, besides statements, besides performance reports, we also give you an accounting report that is Gatsby compliant, Gatsby 45 compliant. So we provide this for your auditors, use this report for your audited statements. And we do this monthly or quarterly. Usually, for these type of funds, it works out better quarterly, because it's market movements and stuff. We can track the amount of money that the school district actually put in, which would be taxpayer-funded, and then, and how much it's grown, so you know that these funds are actually working to pay for future benefits, and it's not all coming out of taxpayer money. And then, under tab seven is where we have that client list, and tab eight is our fee schedule. So anyone less than $6 million, we charge 40 basis points. So that's 0.40%, so less than 1%, less than a half a percent is our standard fee for that. And then, once the funds get above that, which they can grow rapidly, and some of these depend on how you're funding it, the fee does drop once you reach one of the milestones.
So what does that translate into regarding monthly, you pay monthly, quarterly?
So it'd be, at 40 basis points, it's 10 basis points a quarter.
So dollars means what?
For $100,000?
Well, based on what you have provided here.
Can you, can you do an illustration using this, and let's say?
What's the market value?
Say 100.
Yeah, so $100,000 would be $400 a year at 40 basis points. That'd be $100 a quarter.
Can we budget for that in a second?
Comes right out of the trust.
It comes out of the trust. It's under procurement laws, it's under the exemptions for procurements, it's under exemption 20, which is, which exempts anything that you pay for out of the trust, and it just comes out of the income that's produced.
So fees set up the account?
No. And it covers all transaction fees, custodial fees. It's as transparent and simple as possible, there's no other cost associated with that.
So that's impetus for that to do well.
Yeah, right.
Right?
Yeah, no, it's certainly about interests aligned, you know, you have to work on volume in this industry.
Right. Okay, questions?
Mark? Are you involved with any multi-employer trusts at this point, or is it all individual entities that you're focused on?
Yeah, no, so we're not involved in any multi-employer trusts. Like I said, we manage, every account we manage for all clients is individually managed and separately managed. To be honest, $100,000 OPEB trust is invested the exact same way as a $10 million OPEB trust. Obviously, the cost can be different based off of annual management fees, but investing the exact same things at the exact same ratings, given the risk profile is the same, at the exact same expense ratio. So there's, the economies of scale that used to be needed in multi-employer type of things are only really beneficial when you have tens or dozens of billions of dollars, not a couple of million dollars.
I have a question.
Absolutely.
And how do you actually do your investment stuff? Are you doing mutual funds, or actually doing actual stocks, or multi-dependent on your client and their setup and their targeted?
So, most of the OPEB trusts that we manage are daily liquid actively managed mutual funds in global equity, fixed income, and alternatives. We do manage, you know, we manage over $1.7 billion. Over a billion of dollars of that is individual securities, both in equity and fixed income. So we have experience managing individual securities, but in this type of mandate where it's prudent investors, the universe of investments, especially when you have $100,000, $150,000 account, for diversification benefits, you want that, those diversified vehicles, instead of individual securities that are going to limit your diversification and increase your concentration risk, you know, especially when you're buying individual fixed income securities, really going to limit your diversification if you're buying individual abuses. Because you don't want us buying, you know, emerging markets fixed income securities, or emerging markets equities, or stuff like that. You want that to be part of a bigger, more diverse strategy and exposure. That's, that helps the portfolio. Makes sense.
Great.
Thank you.
More questions, Neil?
So, I understand that if you're customizing everything, you're going to have like blended benchmarks based on whatever vehicle you're investing in.
Yeah.
But that being said, do you have any information that we could, that you could share with us as far as overall performance goes on those, you know, for the particular clients, client XYZ or whatever?
Yeah, I can't do it per client.
No, I get that, because it's private stuff.
Right.
But that being said, just to understand how you've performed, and then a benchmark for that performance, if you know what I'm saying.
Yep.
So, you know, are we translating, you know, two, three, five years, you know, whatever that might be.
Yeah, we have composite performance. Our September 30th just got approved and released from the finance department, a day or two ago, so I can forward that along.
Yeah, so who is it that, who is it that actually decides the risk profile for the district, and then how often is that reviewed?
Okay, so legally, or, because every entity is different, right? So legally.
We kind of want to do the legal thing.
Yeah, well, obviously, if you have.
That would be really important.
Not legally versus illegally, you know, it's like technically.
Right, no, I understand. But just, I want to clarify for anyone who's listening.
So, assuming you go through the process of adopting 32b section 20 in its current form, after the Municipal Modernization Act, which, again, we can give you samples wording of how to vote that, we do that all the time. And it depends on how you choose to go through that voting process of who is the trustee, right? So the treasurer remains the custodian, no matter what. If the treasurer is the sole trustee, then technically, the treasurer makes the decision, but the treasurer can make the decision in conjunction with an advisory board, as Doris explained earlier. If it becomes a diverse board of trustees, then the board of trustees collectively vote on stuff like that. Okay? How often is it reviewed? It can be, usually, risk profiles, investment policy statements are reviewed at least annually. Most of our periodic reviews with committees happen mostly biannually, after 12/31, you know, so in the first quarter of the year, and after June 30th, so usually this time of the year, actually. You know, we probably like to do it in the third quarter, but people are enjoying the summer.
I bring that up because in the early 2000s, you probably recall, Orange County is a great example. They weren't keeping that, they took their eye off the ball. Somebody was assessing, or taking on extraordinary risk and lost everything when markets turned.
Yeah.
And so that would be a fear, obviously, of, well, since we have policies that are 15 years old and haven't been reviewed, that we put ourselves in a situation down the line where, again, we've taken the eye off the ball, and all the hard work is for naught.
Sure. I have two thoughts on that. The first one is, if you refer back to the template on the investment policy statement, there are minimums and maximums for asset class. Obviously, they're kind of generic in terms of being a nominal 10% on either side of your long-term target. So if you're an investment manager, the hire violates that and lets the risk get too high, and then something happens like that, obviously, they're liable that you can go after them, because they violated your policy.
But that's on an annual, that's on an annual basis, right? So 10%, 10%, 10%?
No. Or is that? That's, at any point in time, this portfolio should be inside of these parameters, on the minimums and maximums of the per asset class. So based off of the sample that we gave you on page seven of nine, and that's section four, if you entered a secular bear market, a bad equity market, like 2000, 2001, or 2008, and heading into that market, your investment manager, let's just say that this policy was actually true, and they had 70% in equity instead of the policy says 55% max, they violated your policy, and you can go after that for.
Loss?
For, yeah, well, for, you know, through an arbitration process of some kind to, because they violated your policy, they violated the agreement that you, it's not really agreement, but they violated your policy of investment, right? So that's my first thought. The policy protects you from that to a degree. Secondarily, and I did not say this in talking about investment process, but it's very, very important, you should be rebalancing your risk profile to whatever your investment manager's targets are for asset allocation at that point in time, at least annually. So there's two things. It's reviewing your risk profile doesn't make sense appropriately as a prudent investor, are we investing our OPEB trust prudently based off of what our long-term return needs are for our actuarial study, if reviewing that annually. But also, in your periodic reviews with your investment manager, whether it's annual, biannual, quarterly, they should never be violating your policy.
So this sounds like we would need to have some sort of a trust that would be involved to bookend, you know?
The policy's separate from the trust.
Right, okay, sorry. So, in other words, to set up the investment minimums, maximums, et cetera, we would need to have a trust that would be reviewing this annually.
A board of trustees, you mean?
Board of trustees.
Board trustee or an advisory.
Yeah, so in either situation, it's, the board of trustees would be reviewing it, the advisory board would be reviewing it too, but technically, the treasurer remains the sole trustee. Usually, in those cases, you know, the advisory board doesn't really need to vote on things, but they can advise the sole trustee, who is the treasurer, what they'd like that person to do.
Who is the counterpart of our treasurer with your organization? Who works, whose job is to work with our treasurer, who is the trustee?
Yes.
In your.
On an ongoing basis, like on a regular basis. So for our team in section two, again, and that's one of our major bullet points for us as a company, we are a team-based environment. Okay, so we have a number of people on the external client-facing side, on the left-hand side of that chart, if you're looking at that. We have the biographies and pictures of everyone that's involved, whether it's externally or internally. And so it's not just one person, and we think that that's very important, because we have a diverse set of skills. Dory, as you mentioned earlier, is a former treasurer. Dory, as you mentioned earlier, is a former treasurer, so is Chuck Patterson, who's our chief, our COO and head of the institutional department. And then there's myself and others on the investment management team, it's not just me managing the money, of course, even though I'm here tonight, and do a lot of these meetings externally, and we have other support staff as well.
Typically, what you will see is Chuck, myself, Michelle, or Brian will be out here on a quarterly basis, checking in with the treasurer, you know, going through, going over statements, going over performance reviews, and then, we usually like to meet with a committee, a minimum of once a year, if not more often, if, if there is a committee of some sort. Some school districts, there, there's no committee, but we'll meet with the finance committee of the school district, or, and, and at times, we present in front of the full school committee, because they want to, they want to take a look, where is our OPEB now? So we'll, we'll get some updates on that. And that, we always bring out one of our, one of our investment team members, so you get more of the details.
Is there an investment manager that is dedicated to working with our, our trustee and advisory committee, who makes the decisions or advises relative to what to invest in, or the, the risk, et cetera?
It truly is a team. Truly, you'll, you'll get, this group will help the committee decide, and, and when we go out to sit with whoever's going to make that decision, how, what the risk will be, we'll bring some, one of our investment team, we'll bring one of our, our support team, and we'll talk about the risks, and how it goes, and that gets communicated. The next person who comes out, if it's, you know, it's typically, at, at times, will be the same person, and, and other times, it'll be somebody else.
So, so let me interrupt for a second, is your question, do we have a dedicated service?
I have another question as well, that may be related to it, but yeah, but is it a managed trust? So is, what we're investing is monitored, and are recommendations given to the trustee or the advisory relative to, you know, the, the performance of whatever we're investing in, and, and making changes to that? How does that work?
So when we come out and meet, and we go over the, the accounts, we go over performance, we go over how it's invested, if they want to make a change, or we recommend a change, we bring that back to our, our investment team and say, okay, you know, they're, they've been investing moderately, they want to take this up a notch, maybe go to a moderate aggressive type of portfolio, we bring that in there, we put together documents for that, get signed off, and then the investment team goes and makes the changes.
Do you ever advise against something that an advisory or trustee wants to do?
Fairly often, we've come across those that maybe want to get a little too crazy. We bring it to the team, the investment team, and Alex and his team would be the ones that would say, you, here's the risks of doing that.
So, our, I mean, our job is to work collaboratively with a trustee, board of trustees, to provide what they're looking for. Our obligation is to state what those decision, the ramifications of those decisions, positive or negative. So, I mean, in those situ, in those rare situations where we professionally object, it's when people want to go to 100% equity. And roll the dice.
Neil, sure, thanks.
So, in order to get this ramped up, we're looking at a 20 to 30-year window to be fully funded, based on most of the.
Yep.
Programs, which means that we're continuing to go pay-go up until that point, that we can then start drawing on the funds.
That's the concept, to start supplementing your budget.
That, that's the concept at this point. However, if you think about your pensions, it's, it's a little, it's, you're putting so much in as your pay-go, and you're putting so much in as the unfunded liability, and they've taken over making the, the payments from that. Depends on how, how big your account gets, and when it gets there, that can, that can actually start all being funded, so it, it comes off of your, it comes off your budget. Your budget now is just the money we put into that trust, the trust budget is now, we've got to pay these bills from, from the trust.
So at some point in time, we decide, okay, we've got a million dollars that's in this, we're making a return of 12% or whatever, whatever, whatever the thing is, right?
Yeah, I know.
We've reached such and such a threshold, now we can draw it down, or do we have other decisions we're making, well, we're going to take the interest that we made this year, and we're going to offset, you know, I'm just wondering what the flexibility is, because I see, again, the potential for some funky.
Yeah.
I'm all about the, the funky decisions.
That, that comes up into the trust agreement.
Okay, alright.
And gets built into that. And again, we're looking for the guidelines on that, but they're, they're very specific.
It also comes down to the actuarial as well.
It comes up, yeah.
Because the study is really, there, that's the roadmap for, A, how to fund it, and B, how to spend it, you know, and that's what you pay them, pay them for. They're, they could tell you, when is the appropriate time to start using it, to start supplementing your budget for that lineup.
Thank you. And the only other question I had was, at this point, was what, are you seeing at this point in time, any percentage ratio rate, however, however you want to classify this, or contribution that needs to be made on an annual basis, so that you're not adversely affected by any sort of bond rating, or, you know?
I can't, I don't know if we can, I don't know if we can tie a specific percentage of your annual required contribution to that. The, the number that if was, if it's accessible by anyone, which may be by your FA, is, and your, and your cred, you know, talking to your creditors, is other school districts of similar characteristics of the same credit rating, what are they doing? Because that's, that, it's, it's all about, you know, it's not who can run faster, it's, we're the fastest runner, but you have to outrun the people behind you.
Right.
So if your credit rating is here, you need to make sure that you're doing similar things or better than what they're doing.
To add to that, I have talked to people from Moody's and from S&amp;P, and they're saying, what they're looking at is that you have a plan, and when you go in for a rating, they're going to, they're going to very much ask you, okay, let's see your actuary study, how much is unfunded, how much have you funded, what is your plan to fund that? And it doesn't have to be that we're going to have this funded in 20 years, but there has to be a plan. This year, we're putting this much in, next year, we plan to take this percentage of our budget. We, when we, when we have our pension fully funded, we're going to take the money that we were putting towards that, and we're going to turn that money right into this OPEB to, to boost that, those numbers up at that given dates, and you can get that from your, when you, when you look at your pension numbers, they'll tell you when you're going to be fully funded, and you know what you're putting in extra, and that, that goes into your plan. They want to see that you have a plan, that you have.
A commitment.
You've recognized your unfunded liability, you're putting in a significant portion, it, it doesn't have to be the full amount you need to fund that particularly, but you're putting in a, a portion, and you're making an effort, and you're increasing and moving towards your plan. And so that's, that's what they want to see, and they want to, and now, we've, we've talked to several communities that, that say, oh yeah, they're asking these questions, how much you, and now they're starting to see, yeah, you're, you're doing what you said you were going to do, and it's working more positive. Other, they don't want to see that you put a one-time piece of money in, opened up the trust, and then you didn't do anything else. They don't want to hear that, that's, they don't consider that a realistic effort.
Alright, thank you. I, I don't want to cut you off, but I want to be fair to the other organizations, so I would ask the school committee members, if anybody has additional questions, to please, let's funnel them through me, and I'll get with Pat, and she can work with Vicki. Doris and Alex, I'm so glad you brought Alex. Thank you very, very much for coming, this was incredibly informative.
Very informative.
And for taking the time to come out on a Tuesday night, we appreciate that as well. So thank you so very much, appreciate your time and expertise.
Thank you.
We do appreciate the opportunity to sit in front of you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, you too. We've got about nine minutes left, I think, one of the things we should probably do is, there's been a lot of discussion, and I think maybe everybody cook on it a little bit, and then we can come back together at a regular meeting and set aside a portion of a meeting to have a discussion on developing a point of view on, do we want to go forward, we know we need to set the trust up, but perspective-wise. So just kind of noodle around, honestly, if you do have questions, and don't be uncomfortable asking a question, because it's a whole new world for a lot of folks, send those questions in, and we'll make sure that everybody gets copies of the answers, and we'll make those public as well. Okay, does that make sense?
Yeah, is there a way the administration would be able to get us the information on how many other regional school districts in Massachusetts are currently participating, and what level of contribution they're doing? That might not even be available.
We should be able to direct that to Dr. Hemen, and I'm sure that he should have a very quick answer for it, so Pat, if you can look into that, that would be great.
Just tell us what the baseline is.
Yeah. Well, and then we can look at comps, right? Size.
They just said, it's apples to apples.
Right, right.
And what we're doing.
Good point, yeah. I think that's great, yeah. And that should be a natural next up. Thanks, Neil. Okay, any other comments? Nothing? Alright, well, if that's the case. Thanks, everyone, I'm so thrilled that we're all here. Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Neil, and Kathy's a second, all those in favor, it's unanimous, thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it, okay, thanks.
Alright, thank you.